Hello, everybody. I have 5:30. Can everyone hear me okay?
Roger that.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, welcome everyone to the July 26, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting. And at this point, I would like to ask the City Board to please call to roll.
Counselor Richardson.
President.
Counselor Randall.
Present.
Counselor Runyon.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
I'm here, present.
Counselor Long Richard, yeah, Long Richard, Long Curtis, sorry.
Present.
And Mayor Mays.
Here, thank you very much. At this point, item three, Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to call on Counselor Rod Runyon to lead us in the pledge. Counselor Runyon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation under God with liberty and justice for all. Hurrah.
Thank you. Item four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion or an amendment to be made here? I do believe we've added a consent agenda, item nine C, so. Whoever makes the motion may want to consider that.
We've all waited each other out, so I will make the push to approve the agenda with the addition of item nine sixty.
Is there a second?
Okay, I'll second.
It's been moved by Counselor Runyon and seconded by Counselor McLaughlin to approve the agenda. Adding item nine C surplus property under the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item five is presentations, proclamations. A is the presentation on the e-scooter rental pilot program in the DOWS.
Honorable Mayor, if I might, this is Dave Anderson. I'd make an introduction if that's okay.
Please do, thank you.
A few months ago, the city was contacted by representatives from a company called Bird, which operates electronic scooter or e-scooter rental programs. They were seeking permission to initiate a and operate a pilot program in the DOWS. The issue was taken to the Traffic Safety Commission and they discussed it at two different meetings. Ultimately, all their questions and concerns were addressed and they were satisfied with the proposal. And recommended that the issue be raised to the City Council for consideration. With that, I'd like to introduce Michael Cavato. I hope I'm saying your last name correctly with Bird. And he will make the presentation to the council outlining that request. Michael?
Before Mr. Mr. Cavato, excuse me. Mr. Anderson, did the, I understand that the Traffic Safety Committee recommended to go to the City Council. Did they make a recommendation? On whether or not to accept the program?
The information that was shared with me was that all their questions and concerns were addressed, but they didn't formally make a motion to recommend implementation. Their version of doing that was recommending that it be raised to the next level for consideration.
Okay, Mr. Cavato, how are you tonight?
I'm doing very well, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Rod. How are you?
I'm doing fine and I think everyone else is too, so go ahead.
Appreciate it. I'm going to share my screen here. Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Wonderful. As Mr. Anderson mentioned, I'm Michael Cavato with Bird Rides Incorporated. We do business as Bird. We are a shared electric vehicle company that specializes in what they term micromobile, micromobility, meaning vehicles designed for that sub-five mile trip distance. What we are really ultimately looking to do here is make cities more livable, help improve air quality, help reduce traffic congestion, and generally give people an alternative means of getting around their their community. The way that our system works is very similar to some of the bike share systems that you might already be familiar with. Individuals will download a mobile application onto their smartphone, see one of our scooters or electric bicycles throughout the community, or via the map functionality on the mobile application. When they first download the app, they both create an account that requires them to go through a safety tutorial, so they are taught appropriate riding behavior, proper parking etiquette, et cetera. Upon approaching one of the vehicles, they hit a button to scan it to unlock it, take it where they need to go, usually somewhere around ten to fifteen minutes away before hitting a button to end their ride. These are generally $1 to unlock, plus a certain number of cents per minute, depending on various city conditions. Specifically for the DOWS, the vehicle that we propose introducing is this shared electric scooter that you're seeing here. They are very analogous to a bicycle. Oregon State law essentially boils down to regulate them or treat them as you would a bicycle in ninety-nine percent of cases. What you'll notice here is that every one of yours is equipped with a headlamp that allows it to be visible at night, running lights and tail lights. Or pardon me, brake lights that are activated when a user uses the onboard braking system, as well as a safety decal that shows key contact information, as well as some of the pertinent information around safe riding behavior. In terms of how we partner with cities, and I use that term very informally, this comes obviously at no cost. We are seeking no investment, no subsidy. Bird covers all of the upfront costs to implement one of these systems. There is an ongoing relationship with the DOWS through our city's relationship, through the city's relationship manager. This is an individual that city staff may speak with however frequently they like to address any questions, concerns, and adapt the program to best suit the needs of the community. If there are some things that come up at a later date that were not immediately identified during the pre-planning stage. Part of the way that we, there we go, part of the way that we work with communities is actually by partnering with local small business owners or entrepreneurs. To provide a primary economic benefit. What this allows us to do is provide a small business that has no upfront cost, no fixed cost, and no termination penalty for somebody within the community itself. This allows the the city to have the confidence of knowing that there is an individual that we term a fleet manager. Who is checking on every single scooter within the community multiple times per day, usually once every couple of hours. And ensuring that the system is run appropriately, rebalancing, which is a fancy word for moving the scooters from locations where people have ended their ride, is done diligently. And any day-to-day maintenance and management is performed very quickly and effectively. In terms of the impact that this has, from a broader scale, fifty-six percent of our rides to and in front of a small business, and there has been significant research which shows that businesses accessible by alternative transportation do show increased spend. I'll dive into that in a second. Our fleet managers, the individuals that I was referencing in the previous slide, have an average take home of a little over seventy thousand dollars nationally. In an area like the DOWS where there is no other shared mobility provider, certainly I think there is the potential for this to be something that could be quite lucrative. The final stat that you're seeing there comes from a study from Emory University, which showed that scooters drove over a six-month period. An additional nine hundred and twenty-one dollars per unit in additional spending to small businesses, specifically within the food and beverage industry in Santa Monica. What this means is that by introducing e-scooters, there can be a secondary economic benefit in that there is significantly more spending done in local small businesses. Particularly, I would assume, within the downtown corridor, given the layout of the city. With respect to some of the technology that we possess, Bird was the first shared electric scooter company in the world. We are now present in over three hundred cities globally, the majority of those within the United States. What this means is that we've had a great chance to really hone in on the technology that we've built and custom designed for a shared scooter application. Every scooter is equipped with a combination GPS and something similar to a cellular phone called an IoT device. That allows us to create both geo-fencing and geo-speed. What that means is we can create digital boundaries that if a scooter crosses, it will slow down to about a mile and a half per hour, start keeping and flashing, and the user will be notified that they must return to an operational zone. In other particular areas, we can slow down the maximum speed of the scooters, which we ordinarily cap at fifteen miles per hour. It's about what your average amateur bicyclist travels at, to a lower speed if that's appropriate. Bird is also the only company to offer a feature that we call helmet selfies to encourage safe riding behavior and wearing of helmets. If a user takes a photograph of themselves at the end of their ride wearing a helmet, they receive a credit to their next ride. With respect to the parking management features, we can create designated areas that we encourage individuals to bring their scooters to, again, through this geo-fencing capability that we possess. So that scooters are brought to a specific location to help reduce and alleviate any risk that they might become a nuisance. Warm-up mode is a feature available on certain make models of our scooters for new users. What that does is it further reduces the maximum speed when someone first creates an account for at six miles per hour. Gives people a little bit more confidence, a little bit more familiarity with the system in case somebody might feel that it's a little bit too much for them to start at that fifteen mile per hour cap. Certainly, it's a great way to make sure that things are very accessible. Quick start is for a regular commuter, which we find is quite frequent in most of our communities. This allows an individual to simply tap a button and approach the nearest scooter without going through the flow of having to scan anything or hit a button to start a ride. One piece of information not mentioned here that before, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate venue to address any questions, but certainly I'd be more than happy to, but one piece before that I do want to make sure I mention. Bird also has the most robust community pricing program. This offers fifty percent off discounts for individuals who have socioeconomic disadvantages, veterans, senior citizens, as well as select nonprofit groups. Certainly something you want to make sure that we implement within the DOWS as well to make the system as successful as possible to across range individuals, resident or visitor. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if this formal allows for the answering of questions, but I would be happy to answer anything that the council might have.
Okay, I think it'd be very appropriate for any questions. Any questions from council members about this program? Counselor McLaughlin.
I was in Portland about a week ago and I saw scooters strewn on sidewalks, causing a obstacle for people. What is the plan for your company to eliminate that problem as it is in Portland?
Excellent question. Within Portland, there are multiple providers, so certainly they have different operational practices. Bird specifically within the DOWS, there are a number of things that we can do to help mitigate that risk. First and foremost, launching a very small fleet, by starting with maybe fifty, seventy-five scooters. It allows us to be incredibly high-touch in the day-to-day management with our local fleet manager checking out every single scooter once every couple of hours. On the rider's side, all of our riders are required to photograph their scooter at the end of their ride to prove that they have parked it appropriately. We have a real-time AI feature that can determine whether a scooter is in frame, so if somebody tries to pull a fast one, snap a pole with their feet, the system will kick them back. Most importantly, that allows us to be very proactive in terms of the management. If something should slip through the cracks, every single scooter has a big sticker on it that has a twenty-four-seven telephone number, email address, multiple social media account that people can use to get ahold of us. Simply call it in, we'll make sure we dispatch someone to correct the issue as quickly as possible.
Other question, quantity in the DOWS. How many would you propose to cite here in the city? How many scooters?
Certainly based off of the geographic size, based off of the the population, the number of visitors you can support in quite substantial fleet. I think a small number would be appropriate. Fifty to seventy-five, I indicated earlier, I think would be a good place to start. You want to ensure that you have sufficient density, that individuals see this as a reliable transportation option, and can find a scooter when they need one, without going too far overboard and overwhelming the community to park too many scooters at the onset. We'll be working very diligently with city staff, so if we need to increase, we can always do so later.
Mayor Mays, I have two more questions. Actually, the headlight, tail light, that was answered in your presentation, so I appreciate that. Helmets, also, are they required? And I saw that, go ahead.
Sorry, Counselor, go ahead.
Helmets required or not?
By Oregon State law, yes, helmets are required. We actually have a free helmet giveaway going on at all times. An individual simply goes to our website or through the mobile application, hit a button, and we will ship a free helmet directly to their doorstep. The charge is nine dollars and ninety-five cents shipping and handling, otherwise there is no additional fee. Ensure that everyone who does not have access to a helmet can find one very important.
That answers that, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a few questions, sorry.
Um, okay, go ahead, then, Counselor McLaughlin, so you can go after Counselor Richardson, go ahead.
Ah, thank you. Mr. Cavato, what is the term of a pilot project in terms of months or years are you going to be asking for?
Typically, we seek, typically, we seek twelve months, simply because that gets an opportunity to see through all seasons where you might see some variability in the utilization. Certainly, make sure everybody feels comfortable, so if necessary to terminate early, there's no issue on our side. We can suspend or terminate services very quick.
Do you have a local operator identified?
I can take a look. I don't know offhand, I apologize, but certainly I can take a look. We would not launch without introducing the local operator to our our.
How did you select the DOWS for a pilot program? I'm curious, what are the parameters you're looking at?
So we are present in similar communities within Oregon, Pendleton and Hermiston, for example, both have similar population sizes and are seeing considerable utilization on a fleet of scooters. The DOWS, based off of the layout, I think, would be very well suited to a shared mobility program. Within the core concentrated area, you have a nominal grid system for the streets. You have some very bicycle-friendly streets closer to the water. So certainly, I think there's quite a bit of advantage. Where we would anticipate the majority of rides happening, you're about two and a half miles long, maybe about a mile wide. Certainly really an ideal operational zone for a modest fleet. The DOWS, I think, can be very well serviced with a small fleet of scooters that can deliver considerable benefit to the community, which is part of the appeal.
Just one comment, fifty to seventy-five does not sound like a small fleet for our town, but that's, that's just for comment. That's, that's rather more than I would have imagined. The last question I have is, again, on pricing. You said it's a dollar to start, sort of initiate a ride, and then it's a some amount per mile, I think you said. What's a ballpark? What, what, what would be a feasible or a, you know, a realistic amount to be thinking about?
So we charge one dollar time lock plus a certain number of cents per minute. Based off of the things that we would anticipate within the DOWS, I would assume somewhere between four to five dollars to get directly from point A to point B. Quickly, cleanly, effectively, and frankly, with an element of fun. I can provide some clarity on the fifty to seventy-five number if you'd like. Certainly, I can imagine that it might seem like, like more than would be necessary. These fleets really do require a certain minimum number of scooters. Having too few scooters is just as bad as having too many. If you don't have enough, people don't see it as a reliable transportation option, can't find them, and the community doesn't really see this as the public transportation option that it essentially is meant to serve as.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Long Curtis.
Yeah, I, I was thinking that's along those same lines, but then I was doing some quick math and I was thinking three scooters in fifteen locations is seventy-five. And if you think about that instead of seventy-five all in one location, that makes a little more sense. So my question then would be around traffic safety. And I've seen a couple of scooters similar to this around town, but I'm wondering, do you have any formal way of reaching out to the drivers to educate them on how they're supposed to act when they see these new scooters around town?
Excellent question, absolutely. We partner with cities across the nation to implement educational campaigns. This includes providing social media assets, assisting with creating a press release, even doing social media marketing in the area to make sure that we get the word out. I can go into more detail with city staff about some of the avenues that we have available to us, but it is something that we have quite a bit of experience with. In general, on the driver's side, again, treat them as you would a bicycle. That's really what they are, best comparison.
Right. Sometimes you have to tell people the obvious, though they get a little freaked out. And then my other question would be, you mentioned Pendleton and Hermiston. Do you have any statistics on them or any other place that you roll these scooters out as to accidents or situations that are new once the scooters come to town?
Absolutely. So actually, a number of third-party studies were done. So the city of Austin did one, city of Portland, city of Miami, as did the International Transport Forum, which is a collection of transit agencies from sixty different member countries. Every single one of those studies found parity in the incident rate for injuries on e-scooters as the incident rate for injuries on bicycles, meaning e-scooters are going to be about as safe as bicycles.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other questions? Counselor Long Curtis, I mean, Counsel Runyon, I'm sorry. That's the second time somebody's messed up your name, sorry.
I want to congratulate the other counselors on eliminating almost all of my questions. Very good job, very good job. So you see these as being ridden on the street, on the city streets, not on sidewalks, I'm assuming.
Yes, Counselor. Again, treat them as you would a bicycle. Keep them to the right side of the, the street, keep them in bike lanes where they're.
But they indeed are, according to your information here, an electric powered vehicle, is that correct?
They are powered by an electric motor, yes.
Yeah, so they are a motorized vehicle.
They are not a motor vehicle, however.
They're not, but they're motorized, is what I said. So they go up to fifteen miles per hour?
That's right, Counselor. We can further reduce that speed within specific areas that we block off digitally. So if there are concerns about using them on a trail system, for example, we can reduce the maximum speed there so that they don't present enough.
We actually have a riverfront trail that does not allow, I thought it only allowed bicycles and people walking. And I'm wondering how you see that, if you've researched the area, how that working to where it doesn't bother those that are pedestrians on those trails?
Excellent question. As if the riverfront trail does allow for e-bicycles, which I apologize, I did not have a chance to go through the local ordinance that would dictate whether that would be applicable, then certainly the scooters would deal with that as well. Having said that, if there was a prohibition on any form of motorized vehicle, we could take a digital boundary over specifically the riverfront trail. To prevent anybody who thought it might be a good idea to use the scooter there until such time as the city felt that it might be appropriate. If the person goes over there, scooter slows down to a mile and a half, starts keeping and flashing, user gets told to turn around and go back to the operational zone and cannot end their ride until they do so.
Yeah. Have you spoken to local law enforcement at all?
I apologize. My colleague Garrett is the one who is actually speaking with the city. I believe he has spoken with the local law enforcement during the communications with the Traffic Safety Commission, but I would not be able to definitively confirm that.
Okay. And just in general, one of the things that I have not seen, which I would really like to, you've had two meetings of the Traffic Safety Commission, and I really planned to read that material before I'd go any further on it. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other counselors have any questions? Counselor Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I just want to comment. I haven't had any experience with e-scooter program, but I did use a bike share program for quite a while, and it was, it was awesome. Especially when it came to, as you indicate here, connecting to other transit options. So based on the information that the Traffic Safety Committee has vetted it, I would actually support a pilot program of this type. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Mr. Cavato, how long has your company been in business? Did I miss that?
So we were the first shared electric scooter company in the world, first established in 2017, so certainly it is a relatively new industry. But as we're present in about three hundred cities globally now, we do have quite a bit of experience in terms of managing one of these systems.
So you're in three hundred other cities? Is that worldwide or just the United States?
Three hundred cities globally, about two hundred of those within the United States.
And two of them are Pendleton and Hermiston, and how long have you been in each of those cities?
We launched earlier this year with both cities.
Okay. Are you asked, you're not asking, there's other, you have competitors, obviously, right?
There are other companies that offer shared mobility systems, yes.
So you're not asking for an exclusive franchise or whatever you want to call it?
No, Mr. Mayor. I feel confident that we'll be able to deliver a level of service, though, that will exceed anybody else.
Okay, my final question, I see Brianna Wimber has her hand up, and maybe I'll be jumping her on this. I imagine you have quite a large insurance policy.
That is correct. So with our agreement with the city, there's not only some indemnification language that should prevent the majority of concern that we're alluding to. But we would also add the city as an additional insured on our general liability policy so that in the event of a claim, it'll be our policy that triggers regardless, and adjuster would do the appropriate investigation after.
So a hold harmless and an additional insured, both?
Correct, and some indemnification language as well as the additional insured.
Okay. All right, next question comes from one of our insurance brokers. Go ahead, Ms. Wimber.
I actually don't have necessarily an insurance question. We have quite a bit of weather in our area. And when you think about, as Darcy did the math, thank you for that, because, yeah, the number, the number did sound like a large number, but when, when you do the math like Darcy did, it does seem to kind of spread, spread that out. But what happens when we get a lot of snow? So generally, when we get a lot of snow, we have a lot of, you know, snowplows and, and we obligate our, our individual businesses to keep their sidewalks free and clear. In visiting Pendleton quite a bit, we have an office there as well, throughout the weather, there's a lot of scooters that are kind of strewn and grouped together. What is your proposal for that? Do you guys generally collect up the scooters and make sure they're in a designated location, as you said, through a weather event?
So in the event that there would be any snowfall, prior to that, we collect all the scooters, bring them to a central location on private property and store them until the weather was more appropriate. If you have some unseasonably warm temperatures, maybe we deploy them for a few more days in December, that sort of thing. If not, we simply wait until things are a little bit more appropriate in the springtime, redeploy then. So we operate in a number of northern cities, including northern Canada, the Scandinavian countries. We call it the process hibernating the scooters, something we're quite familiar with.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good questions, good discussion. I guess the staff would appreciate if they had some kind of some sort of direction from here. I'm a little disappointed the Traffic Safety Committee did not take a position on it. Counselor Long Curtis.
Well, along those lines, I'm not, I'm not sure, I think it's Counsel Randall, but someone from the city council represents us on the Transportation Safety Committee, so that person could give us a report or at least a general consensus.
Counsel Randall, have you been able to attend those meetings?
Actually, Mayor, I'm no longer on the Traffic Safety Committee.
Mayor Mays, I I believe Russ Brown is now still the appointed representative for the traffic or for the council, I believe, on the Traffic Safety Committee. Is that that correct?
No, that wasn't the intent. I appointed Mr. Brown as a regular member. I'll have to, I'll have to reappoint a council member to the Traffic Safety Committee.
Okay, I I had a little bit of information that I could share if the council so desired. Because I did, it was information that was presented to us by Bird earlier in our discussions and I didn't hear it in in the presentation. To Counsel Richardson's question about, you know, what made the Dells a fit, I think it was my understanding, the fact that we have a transit system to connect to was one of the material factors of why they thought the Dells was a good fit, amongst the other things of size and the layout of the city. One of the elements of their program would be, it was mentioned about having private property where the scooters would be accumulated, it was presented to us that they would scooters be brought in daily, charged out of sight in this private, on private property. So they aren't being left on the street overnight is is my understanding, and Mr. Cavato could certainly correct me if I'm misstating any of this. And then regarding the question about local law enforcement, we do have two local police officers on the Traffic Safety Commission, one are still local, our city police is represented on that commission, and then there also is an OSP officer on the commission, so there was, there was two voices from law enforcement represented in the Traffic Safety Commission meetings. I just wanted to follow up with that additional information for the council's consideration.
May I ask you a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Counsel Richardson.
Director Anderson, do you feel comfortable giving us your read of what the Traffic Safety Commission thought about the idea? Was there a consensus view?
Before you answer, I see Mr. McCabe's hand raised, and I believe he's the staff liaison, but Mr. Anderson, did you want to answer that question or you want?
Oh, no, I I just soon listened to or hear from a city engineer, Dale McCabe, who's a staff member on the commission.
Yeah, go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, I I was in attendance at both of those Traffic Safety meetings where Garrett gave the presentation and like was kind of mentioned at the very beginning, all the questions were answered that the Traffic Safety Committee members had, and it would be my understanding that they were in favor of it and then moving it forward to the city council. They didn't necessarily give a recommendation to accept them, but they were all in favor of it, the to move forward to the city council for the ultimate decision.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it's, there was no strong objections raised or it was a consensus that?
It was a consensus to to recommend moving it forward to the city council for the ultimate recommendation. They were, they were all in favor of it. It was a unanimous decision to to move forward to the city council.
Okay.
I would offer, I would share, just in terms of full disclosure, that after the second Transportation Safety Commission meeting, one of the members who wasn't present at the meeting followed up with the Public Works Secretary to express some concern, so he wasn't part of that unanimous vote, but just in terms of full disclosure, he did provide some concerns.
Thank you.
Such as, what were the concerns?
I think he had actually, his biggest one was he questioned whether there was much value in a community this size. And that was from his personal perspective, and again, he didn't have the benefit of the conversation that happened at the second Traffic Safety Commission meeting.
Thank you. Okay. What does the council, what would the council like to do from here? Counselor Long Curtis.
Yeah, I would like to see staff work with Bird to develop a pilot operating agreement and a memorandum of understanding. I'm I'm not particularly concerned about their business model, I feel like it's up to them to determine whether or not this is gonna pan out for them financially, but they've answered all my questions successfully in order to allow them to give this a a shot.
Okay. We can either put that in the form of a motion or we can discuss the merits of Counselor Long Curtis' suggestion. Counsel Runyon.
I just think under due diligence, it might be a good idea, Lee, at the very least, for the, our city manager or yourself to contact the mayor or city managers of Pendleton and Hermiston and and get their reactions, what their thoughts are. Just seems like a prudent thing to do. And I really would like to see the the minutes from the Transportation Safety Committee, which I apologize, I have not seen. But anyway, those are my two things.
Two good suggestions. Anybody else?
I agree with both of those, Mr. Mayor, I would personally support staff exploring a pilot project memorandum with the understanding that we would vote on that at a later date, I do think it's, it just feels like something the council ought to have a have its say on. And as part of that, do a little bit of diligence, little outreach to these other cities.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
I'm in favor with those same sentiments, reaching out, getting more information, and moving forward to develop a plan with Bird. I support.
I'd like to go to our city manager. I don't think we need a motion unless somebody really wants to make a motion, but if, it sounds like we have a consensus of the council to at least move forward as described by Counselor Long Curtis, and Counsel Runyon, and it sounds like Counsel Richardson and Counsel McGlaughlin are okay with that path forward, and Counsel Randall's already weighed in, so. Julie, do you feel like you have some direction to go proceed?
Thank you, Mayor, I think I do have enough direction. Excuse me, we'll do some additional research before we turn it over to our legal department and draft something up for consideration. Excuse me, we don't have another meeting until September, so that will give us probably ample time to gather up all the information we need to present something to you at that time.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else, any last final comments before we move on? Okay, Mr. Cavato, thank you very much for coming, and I'm sure that the services of your office will be available to our city staff as we move forward.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of council.
Okay, item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda, up to five minutes per person will be allowed. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. I know Ms. Wimber has indicated she would like to address the council for up to five minutes, so Ms. Wimber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Mays, a quick update for city council and you, I have a SAFE update. It is the glorious time of year where I get to talk about our dividend for City of the Dells. So generally, I would be talking to you all about the dividend from SAFE Corporation, the workers' workers' compensation carrier in the fall, but SAFE has changed up how they are configuring dividends and they are now releasing those in July. So a little bit of history on the dividends that City of the Dells has received. Two thousand and twenty, City of the Dells received a twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollar dividend. That was submitted for September, so September of two thousand and twenty, now we are July of two thousand and twenty-one. The two thousand and twenty-one dividend is based on your standard premium of a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. The dividend factor is the highest that it's ever been, so SAFE declared that the highest dividend factor in the history that I have here for the Dells, which goes back to two thousand and five, in the amount of thirty-eight point one four percent, which is amazing. That nets the City of the Dells' two thousand and twenty-one dividend to be forty-four thousand, eighty-two dollars even. So that is really, really great news. SAFE Corporation does not always do a dividend, dividends are not guaranteed, but when they have surplus and they issue a dividend, that money goes back to each of its members. And City of the Dells has participated in SAFE Corp's coverages for a long time now, and it's not the largest dividend that we have received with City of the Dells because it's based on premium size, so when I indicated that that dividend factor was thirty-eight point one four percent, City of the Dells has been so diligent with their with their workers' compensation program that the premium is a little bit lower, so that dividend of forty-four thousand, like I said, is not the highest dividend we've received, but it is the the largest dividend factor, so kudos once again to City of the Dells for their their tremendous work from each employee, each city council member that has safety at top of mind, each, you know, director, just doing an awesome job. Thank you, and that was my news for today.
Well, I'm really glad you gave the city council some credit, I for one, I'm accident free now for two and a half years, so.
Good, you know, the the safety culture trickles down from the very, you know, core of of everything, and everybody who supports a safety and safe culture, it 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 really pays off. Yeah, Ron?
Probably goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, is there a restriction at all on this dividend? Like, does it have to go back into insurance premium or is it general fund money? We can just, you know, blither away any way we want? You know, are there restrictions on the dividend?
As far as as I go, that is internally managed by the city, so I I ensure that the check goes out, and then other than that, what you guys do with it, you have probably some internal processes that that you have.
I believe our city manager could probably answer that question.
Thank you. The city councils several years ago requested that we create a specific line item to receive those funds, and it goes into that line item in the general fund and is used for safety measures for the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Brianna, and again, our kudos to the staff and the council for the leadership they've shown to get these premiums where they are today, we certainly have made a lot of progress, I know this goes back way before I, not way before, but before I was mayor, and I think we made a lot of great progress. And again, kudos to all the city staff and all the employees for the job, job well done, thank you.
I've got a little comment.
Yes, Counsel McGlaughlin.
It just means more employees are going home safely at night to their families, so thank you.
Thank you, good comment. Okay. Thank you, Brianna, is there anyone else who would like to address the city council for up to five minutes? Mr. Chuck Gomez has his hand raised. Go ahead, Mr. Gomez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Chuck Gomez from the Granada Theater here in the Dells. And first of all, you may all let out a long, loud collective sigh because I am not going to be long-winded tonight. I am here with a sincere heartfelt thank you to the City of the Dells, to the council, especially to Jerry and Terry, the caretakers over at the Lewis and Clark Park. It's an immaculate park, it's beautiful, it's a shame it isn't used weekly, but we do have plans to use it monthly. And Anna had used the word earlier, a trickle-down effect, and I believe when we have a successful event, as we just did with our first Legends in the Dells event that filled the hotels and filled the restaurants and people were walking up and down the streets, we had nearly twenty different cities that purchased tickets from in Oregon from more than twenty miles away. We had nearly twenty cities from Washington over twenty miles away that purchased tickets. We had states, seven states that purchased tickets. I gave an award, a giveaway album to the couple that came the furthest, which was from the islands, and I believe when you have a successful event that brings as many people to a musical festival as we did, there is a huge trickle-down effect that benefits every aspect of the community. So from Aaron and Kelly Lee and Deborah and myself, Deborah and Chuck Gomez, a heartfelt thank you to the community, to the council, and absolutely to the citizens who were one hundred and ten supportive, friendly, and pitched in to help. We did our best to leave the park as spotless as we found it, and we look forward again to our August fourteenth and our September eleventh Legends in the Dells continuing our festivals. So the Dells Council, thank you, thank you, thank you from all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, I heard some good things about that concert as well, and do you have any idea how many people attended? Because I heard, I heard a lot of different numbers.
Our our numbers, I believe, in the park were close to over eight hundred and fifty, close to nine hundred people, counting bands and friends and pass lists and workers and tickets sold and vendors were present, so we had eight hundred and fifty, nine hundred people, that's a huge number for our small community, and we continue to bring that many people hopefully into the community on a monthly basis. So thank you for asking about those numbers, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the city council for up to five minutes? Last call. Okay, thank you very much. Item seven, city manager's report, Ms. Krueger.
Thank you, Mayor Mays, I do not have a report for you tonight.
Okay, city council reports, we'll start with Mr. McGlaughlin.
No report this week.
Counselor Long Curtis.
It's been pretty slow, but I did meet with several constituents to discuss various things that are currently before the city council, like the public restrooms, public transportation, and the city manager search. And that's my report.
Thank you, Counsel Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, all I have is July twenty-second Q Life meeting where a motion was passed to award the bid for the downtown overbuild project that involves overlapping new fiber cables to existing strands and pulling fiber cables in existing occupied Q Life conduit, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel Randall, Counsel Richardson.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Runyon.
No report, no report, other than talking a couple of brief conversations with you, sir, the mayor, and a time or two with our city manager.
Okay, thank you very much, item nine on the agenda is consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda of the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any counselor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. Tonight, we have three items on the consent agenda. Tonight, we have three items on the consent agenda. First, the approval of the July twenty, July twenty city council minutes. And then two other items related to surplus property, one of which was uh added to the to the agenda um as an amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Long Curtis.
Yes, um, I have some changes that I'd like to bring up on the July twelfth city council minute. So could we pull that and for now? Thank you.
You want to put that at the end of the meeting or is it something that we can take care of right now?
Um, I mean, I'm prepared to take care of it right now. I just was listening to what you said about moving it to the end of the meeting. So it's more, it's not a Scrivener's error. It's actual change to the minutes.
Okay, why don't we uh, why don't we address it? Let's see, that would be. I guess that'd be um after the the last item because there's no action items. So that'll be a new item thirteen, if that's okay. Okay, is there any other uh discussion on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve items B and C?
Mr. Mayor, I so I will so move accepting B and C.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Counsel McLaughlin and seconded by Counsel Richardson to approve items B and C on the consent agenda. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, item ten A is annexation of property located in the fourteen-hundred block of West Thirteenth Street. Now is the time for a public hearing regarding proposed annexation of property into the city limits. This is a legislative hearing to receive testimony regarding the proposed annexations. I will open the public hearing and ask for a staff report. Following the staff report, I will call for testimony from the audience. At the conclusion of the testimony, the public hearing will be closed and the matter turned over to the city council for deliberation and a discussion. So I'm hereby opening the public hearing. And a staff report, I believe, uh, will be presented by Ms. Don Hurd, our senior planner. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and city councilors. Uh, as stated, this is a public hearing to consider an additional annexation. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here just to kind of help us through a bit. And start. Okay, so I'm hoping you all can see that. So as stated, this property or this application is annexation seventy-eight dash twenty-one. Uh, it's for one property that's located the fourteen-hundred block of West Thirteenth Street. Property owner is Cheryl Baker. Uh, Ms. Baker intends to build a home on these property, on the property, as well as be served by City Sewer. Uh, indicated on the map, you can see a couple of the properties that we had annexed in a previous meeting that um I said and I'll be finishing up with the Department of Revenue and and finishing that process. So this is an additional property in that area, which also includes the public right-of-way. Uh, notice was sent out to the property owner as well as published in the local newspaper and uh, as required by Oregon state law as well as our municipal code. Uh, again, our process for annexation is included in our municipal code, Title X. And we were required that they be processed legislatively as well as meet certain criteria and finding. Staff has provided findings to the council and believes that this application meets all criteria. Uh, inclusion of this property within the city limits will provide an opportunity for the city to continue to plan and design its utilities and for public utilities and facilities, including street systems, uh, water, sanitary sewer systems, and ensure that the city can provide necessary public services to its citizens in an orderly and efficient manner. Proposed annexation is reasonable and consistent with the provisions of our comprehensive plan as well as our intergovernmental agreement with Wasco County for a joint management of property located in the urban growth area. Annexation will allow the city to continue providing necessary services for the residents of this property. Inclusion of this property within the city limits will also transfer responsibility for law enforcement activities related to the property. Uh, and that'll actually go to the city. This will create a more uniform and efficient system of law enforcement, eliminating confusion over which law enforcement agency is responsible for providing services to the property. Um, as identified here is the property that's going to be annexed, um, one parcel as well as the public right-of-way. Uh, at this time, budget limitations, uh, completing completion of the proposed annexation will result in additional property taxes to be paid for the annexed property. Uh, following that process, we'll be uh going to the Department of Revenue and hopefully having everything um complete in order for collection of taxes in November twenty-two. Council alternatives, uh, staff's recommendation is that we move to approve the proposed consent annexation for the property located in the fourteen-hundred block of West Thirteenth Street as detailed in the application annex, ANX seventy-eight dash twenty-one and adopt special ordinance twenty-one dash five eighty-nine. And that concludes my report. Do you have any questions of staff?
Is there any questions as opposed to discussion at this point for Ms. Hurd? Counselor Long Curtis.
Uh, just a clarification, um, Ms. Hurd, you said uh ordinance twenty-one, five eighty-nine, but on the paperwork it says three eighty-nine, and we'll need to know that when we make the motion.
That is cor- excuse me, that is correct, five eighty-nine. There was a typo that uh I received in an email and and I said and I didn't catch it till the it went right out. So yes, that is correct, five eighty-nine.
So instead of three eighty-nine, it's five eighty-nine.
That is correct, excuse me.
I've got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of the staff by the city council? Counselor Long Curtis.
Yeah, so this is uh again, just a question. I don't, I think this is pretty straightforward, this annexation. But I, it did make me think when I was reading through it, um, when we do our residential, um, oh, analysis, I can't remember. Is, do we include, is this already included in that because it was in their urban growth boundary? Or is this now going to be additional land to consider um i- in the next time we do that report?
So our billable lands inventory did include our all areas in the urban area, which ultimately will, the plan is to have that all be city limits. So yes, that did did include that analysis.
Any other questions? Okay, it's that point in the public hearing where we are taking testimonies. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify pro-arcon on this issue of annexation of this property? Anybody? Okay, hearing none. I'm now closing the public hearing. And now the council can deliberate. Or if you don't want to deliberate, you can make a motion.
I can go ahead and do that, Mr. Mayor.
Before you make a motion, Counselor.
Yes.
Since this is an ordinance, I believe we need to know if anyone wants it read in full and if not, read it by title.
Is there anyone that would like to see the have the ordinance read in its entirety?
No.
I see three, four, five shaking of the heads.
No.
We have shakings of the head. Okay. Counselor McLaughlin, you have the floor.
Uh, Mayor Mays, I move to approve the proposed consent annexation for the property located in the fourteen-hundred block of West Thirteenth as detailed in application annex seventy-eight dash twenty-one and adopt special ordinance twenty-one dash five eighty-nine.
I second the motion.
That was Counsel Randall, right?
Yes, yes.
Counselor McLaughlin has moved and Counsel Randall has seconded to approve the annexation, the ordinance approving the annexation. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
McLaughlin, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Hurd. Next on the agenda is uh item eleven A. To award an engineering contract for the Cerrosus Reservoir Roof Repair Project. And this would be Mr. McCabe, is that correct?
Correct.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this contract is for retaining the engineering services of Jacobs Engineering for developing the design drawings and project specifications and performing some special inspections for the Cerrosus Reservoir Roof Repair Design Project. Uh, during the painting project of the interior portion of the Cerrosus Reservoir that occurred back uh last year in the early winter months in the spring of twenty-twenty, we discovered that there was quite a bit of corrosion and metal loss um to much of the roof support system. We did work with Jacobs Engineering and the painting contractor at that time to try to address and correct the deficiencies uh through a change order process. But we were unsuccessfully able to complete that process because we were running out of time and needed to get the reservoir put back into service for the warmer weather that we were beginning to experience. Because of Jacobs familiarity and knowledge of the situation, we'd like to continue working with Jacobs on the project design and development for this project. And we are looking for authorization to enter into a new professional services agreement with them for that effort. The estimated cost for the required engineering services is seventy thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Within Fund Fifty-three, the Water Reserve Fund, there is a total of three hundred thousand allocated in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year for this project. Um, so there is enough monies to cover this uh for the engineering services portion. Um, so with that, um, the staff's recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Jacobs Engineering in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars for the Cerrosus Reservoir Roof Repair Design Project. With that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. McCabe? Counsel Runyon.
Uh, just to be clear, uh, to have either Mr. McCabe or Mr. Anderson uh explain the the ability to continue with that contractor. We ended a contract, so we're under no obligation because of their familiarity and previous work to just continue in a new contract with them. We don't have to go out for bid again.
That's a Runyon. That's that's correct. We can do a direct appointment for an engineering contract if it's under a hundred thousand dollars. And we believe we have the justification in this case because of their prior work on the same project uh to continue that work with them.
I'd just like to get verbally things on the record. Thank you.
And and also the the project that we had them for the painting contract, that was part of an RFP process, which we solicited and had uh several engineers bid on that project. And they were the successful um low bidder on on that contract as well.
Appreciate your responses. It just saves those citizen phone calls later on. Thank you.
Counselor Long Curtis.
Yeah, uh, so I had a follow-up question on that just to confirm because I maybe I read it wrong. But I thought that this was to do the engineering work work so you could put out an RFP for the actual work. Is that wrong or?
No, no, this is the a contract for the engineering services to develop the design drawings, the project specifications, and also they'll uh um be able to perform some special inspections that will have to occur during the construction process. So this is the process that's going through to develop the plans and the project for us to be able to put it out to bid to a contractor. Um, so it won't be an RFP process. It'll be an actual construction bid contract that we'll be putting out.
Okay, but uh, so yes, I I use the wrong terminology, but it's not, it's for putting out the um bid. It's not for actually doing the work yet.
Correct. It's just to assist with the engineering services for developing the project.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McCabe.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just one, Mr. Mayor. This is Counselor Richardson. When are we expecting to put out the RFP?
The the actual bid documents for the construction?
Yes.
Will be putting the that out. Um, I believe probably by in September. And then with the uh being able to take the reservoir offline uh sometime around uh November, the end of November, and have it back, all the the construction work completed and the reservoir back online by March, i- in the end of March.
Thank you.
So the water, that reservoir will be out of commission for six months.
Yeah, similar to what was done when we uh did the interior painting on the project or on the reservoir and when all the deficiencies such as the corrosion and the metal loss were discovered.
Okay, any other discussion or question for the staff? Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Jacobs Engineering in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars for the Cerrosus Reservoir Roof Repairs Design Contract.
Is there a second?
McLaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Counsel Long Curtis and seconded by Counsel McLaughlin to authorize the city manager to enter into the contract with Jacobs Engineering. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McCabe.
Thank you.
Item eleven B, authorization for purchase and installation of an emergency generator at the State Office Building. Uh, Ms. Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Uh, this is a carryover project that we weren't able to complete during the last fiscal year. So we rebudgeted for it, but the price has gone up about six thousand dollars in that time period. So we're proposing to get this project going now. The cost would be about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for a one hundred and twenty-five kilowatt Cummins generator using our pricing agreement through the state of Oregon. And this is to provide emergency power. We've been trying to give generators at many of our facilities. I think you may recall last year, we were able to do the Public Works facility so that in a disaster, we're prepared to have continuity of services. We do have adequate funds available budgeted for this. Um, one of the little problems that we could encounter is because our revenue comes from monthly rent from the State Office Building and the lead time that it's going to take to get the generator and get the work done, we could end up not quite having enough revenue. So if that were the case, we would come back and ask for a supplemental budget to move some of the money back from the Capital Projects Fund to the State Office Building Capital Projects Fund until those rents come in. And our recommendation is to authorize the purchase of the emergency generator through the Sourcewell Pricing Agreement in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents. The lead time on this is months. And so we really need to move forward now with all the paperwork so that we can get it done during the current fiscal year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the city council? Okay, any, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the purchase.
Uh, why don't Counsel Richardson spoke first, so why don't you make the motion? And Counsel Randall, uh, you can second the motion if that's okay. Counsel Richardson.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the purchase of Cummins hundred and twenty-five kilowatt emergency generator through Sourcewell Pricing Agreement in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Counsel Randall, would you like to second that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the purchase of the emergency generator. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Ms. Kruger.
Thank you.
Okay. It's time for our legislative update. And we also have, this is, this item will be divided into two categories of legislative update and code amendments by, the first by our city attorney, Mr. Jonathan Kara, and the second on the code amendments, our Director of Community Development, Alice Cannon. So I, let's turn it over to Mr. Kara.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Last week, I appeared as the guest of honor at the Dallas Unhoused Task Force Meeting where I met with several community partners representing just a wide number of interests associated with understanding the local problems associated with homelessness here in our own community. We went over a number of legislative updates impacting the city's responses to this crisis. And so I thought might as well go over some of those here with you all tonight. In the agenda, I included what I thought to be very comprehensive breakdown of every single bill that passed in the latest Legislative Assembly dealing with the issue of homelessness. And so after my discussion item, I'll pass the Zoom microphone over to Alice Cannon, who will go over the ways in which the city has attempted to respond to some of these changes and in an effort to get our municipal code in line with the state statutes. And so we can go through them very briefly, but I was really wanting to emphasize the discussion aspect of this discussion item because the plain language of the law is straightforward, it's what it is. And so there's not much room for me to elaborate any better than I could have already in this rather lengthy and dry bullet point list. And so let's just run over just a few of them. In order, as it appears in the agenda, we have HB two thousand and six. And again, these were all enrolled in the most recent legislative session of twenty twenty-one. HB two thousand and six addresses the issue of defining what an emergency shelter is. That may look familiar. And in the code amendment updated that Director Cannon will be going over, we tried to incorporate as much of this state statute language as possible in an effort to sort of maximize the City of Dallas compliance with state law. And so you may see a lot of familiar language. HB two thousand and six defines emergency shelters and provides importantly that any approval that's mandated under this statute is void unless the shelter is up and running within two years following its approval by the city. And so the main takeaway of this bill is that if somebody applies to the city for operating an emergency shelter and they come to us with a plan and a building and everything is otherwise good to go, the city must approve it under these standards so long as that approval generates an actual active operating shelter within two years, in which case the approval is void. And so it really puts the burden on the developer or the nonprofit or whoever happens to be applying for emergency shelter to really put, you know, the pedal to the metal and get everything going as quickly as it can. Some of the other implications of two thousand and six include providing the city with the option of allowing any public or private entity to allow overnight camping by homeless individuals living in vehicles on the property of the entity. And again, this is permissive, it says that we may allow this. So it gives the city the authority to allow this under certain conditions. And it also allows the city to impose reasonable conditions on those camping spaces for those vehicles, including setting an established limit. And there are a number of other changes associated with transitional housing with respect to camping in vehicles. Importantly, on the bottom where it says low barrier emergency shelters, this you can think of as the most successful types of shelters. These are, these are really just urgent situations in which there's really no time for this sort of vetting that may go on at Micklemi Community Action Council's shelter site, for example, where there, you know, there are certain rules and regulations associated with people staying there. Under these low barrier emergency shelters, it appears that, according to the state definition, it's really just as accessible as possible in an effort to, well, save lives from those experiencing unsheltered homelessness. Finally, the statute HB two thousand and six defines what a navigation center is. And you can think of that term navigation center, which is gaining a tremendous amount of popularity in its in its use at least. It's a type of low barrier shelter, though it's one that is widely accessible. But it it sort of takes that idea to eleven and it makes sure that anything that calls itself a navigation center is open seven days a week and must connect people with health services, permanent housing, and other public benefits. And so you'll also notice a number of different grants were awarded. I included that here, just to give you some context on the amount of money that's being spent from Salem to different jurisdictions throughout the state, different jurisdictions and nonprofits for the establishment of these navigation centers. Moving on to, well, actually, we'll come back to HB three one one five, which at the at the task force meeting definitely was the star of the show. So we'll come back to that. I want to touch very briefly on HB three one two four, which addresses the issue of removing homeless people and their personal belongings from established camping sites on public property. And so I knew that this HB three one two four, or whatever iteration it was, was coming down the pipeline because of some conversations with the League of Oregon Cities that I was having. And so I tried to be as proactive as possible, I worked very closely. And I'd like to give a big shout out to Captain Jamie Carrico of the Dallas Police Department who put blood, sweat, and tears into working on developing policy consistently with the state law. And in fact, even more broadly, broadly impacting than the state law. And so, for example, this this bill specifically deals with a really narrow issue, which is established campsites on public property and what to do about them. And so this doesn't happen all the time. And so established campsites, that's a term of art that's defined in the statute. And we have it baked into our policy as well. It assesses very certain situations where you'll have homeless people erecting structures. And so HB three one two four and the City of Dallas Police Department's policy that's connected with HB three one two four doesn't speak on the issue of people sleeping on a bench or or on a sleeping bag or something like that. But it specifically only deals with established structures, and they have to be on public property. Both of those terms are pretty broadly defined in both the statute and our policy. And and one example I wanted just to demonstrate in a way that the city is complying with this this statute specifically is, for example, this statute assesses and mandates a seventy-two hour noticing period between the time when the police will go and notice a campsite on public property as being, well, illegally there. The state law requires seventy-two hours notice, which means in practice, in practice, the police will go down there, wherever it happens to be, put a post on a notice on any entrance to that site. And it'll say, we'll be back in seventy-two hours. In which case, if you're still here within two hundred feet of this notice, you will be subject to criminal trespass and your belongings will be taken and stored for your further retrieval in the future. Here in the city, working with Captain Carrico, we understood seventy-two hours to be a little insufficient for a number of our homeless population in order to get them going where they need to go. And so the City of Dallas current policy, as as we have it, gives a five-day window to sort of emphasize, you know, the the purpose of this policy is not punitive in any means. It's simply there to, you know, be a sensible way to reconcile the issue of homelessness with the other issues of public health and public safety. And so it's very educational by nature. Before we jump back to three one one five, I just want to touch again very briefly on HB three two six one. This is, this one is known rather informally, but also somewhat formally as Project Turnkey, which addresses the issue of updating zoning to allow a concept that is gaining popularity throughout the country, certainly throughout the western part of the United States, the concept of converting a hotel or a motel into an emergency shelter and/or affordable housing. And so those terms are all defined in the bill. And it mandates the city approve unconditionally a number of different types of zoning changes that would that would allow those types of conversions to exist. And I'm working pretty closely with our planning director on the ways that this specific bill will impact the City of Dallas. And I'm sure she could speak on it much more than I could at this point. And so the interesting thing to note is that the state takes a pretty objective stance on the definition of affordable housing. And I'll read it to you here. Affordable housing, according to the state of Oregon, means housing in which all units are affordable to households with incomes equal to or less than sixty percent of the area median income, as defined by some statute. And, and that's the important part, and whose affordability is enforceable by Affordable Housing Covenant, as described in some other statutes, for a duration of no less than thirty years. And so what that means for the city is there's not going to be any ambiguity insofar as what defines affordable housing. You know, affordable to you may not be affordable to me. That that whole argument doesn't really work here because of these subjective standards that the state has applied. And so because it has to be enforceable for a duration of no less than thirty years, it adds a really robust metric for the city to measure its level of affordable housing. Okay, and then very finally, the main topic of discussion at the Houseless Task Force Meeting last week was certainly HB three one one five. And the changes in three one one five are not not terribly out of left field. They seem to be sort of in line with the both jurisprudential and statutory regimes at play here, which are namely the Ninth Circuit and the Oregon Legislative Assembly, in which we've talked, and I, when I say we, I mean me. I know I've talked till I'm blue in the face on the issue of Martin V. Boise, in that case, coming out of the Ninth Circuit. And we've talked about it here in these city council meetings. And the idea, just to remind you all, of the holding of that specific case, which is binding on the City of Dallas, as well as the entire state of Oregon, is that cities cannot pass ordinances that criminalize the idea or the experience of being homelessness. And so we don't want to penalize people for being homeless. By, according to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, that is a cruel and unusual punishment. And so that's the mechanism through which the court decided that such ordinances are unconstitutional. And so this bill, three one one five, attempts to take that idea, which comes from a judge, a panel of judges, at least in that case, and turns it into a state law. But it does so in an interesting way. And it takes very specific acts and imposes a mandate on the city that we can't criminalize that that specific conduct without being objectively reasonable. And so those specific acts, there's only four of them, include sitting, lying down, sleeping, or, and again, this is a term of art, keeping warm and dry in outdoor public spaces. And so keeping warm and dry is defined in the bill very broadly, but does not include any measure that involves fire or flames. And so there are other public safety concerns associated with using burn barrels and 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 open flames. And so anytime that the city sees that, it will assess the situation under a different set of laws dealing with with open flames and fires. The bill also defines public property extremely broadly. If you can think of it, if you have an idea of what something might be that could be constituted as public property, it is under this bill. That would include any properties that the city leases or or has open to the public, anything like that. It's, like I said, very extremely broadly defined, but does not include public right of way, which is governed by an entirely different set of laws. It also does, it also defines city or county law as not including that policy I just described to you involving the City Police Department and its removal of homeless people and personal property from established campsites on public spaces. And so this HB three one one five bill does not speak on that specific issue. And in order to give this bill some some what they call teeth, which means there's there's problems if the city violates them, the bill creates an affirmative defense and authorizes attorney's fees for successful defendants to anyone who's been charged with violating a law that that speaks on that specific issue of sitting or lying or sleeping or keeping warm and dry outdoors. And so it gets the lawyers involved. And so that's just one thing to consider. No matter how we end up implementing this bill, which, by the way, doesn't take effect until July first, twenty twenty-three, we were going to do it correctly. But it's good to know that the state has thought ahead for some jurisdictions that may not, by providing a cause of action, affirmative defense for those cities or any jurisdiction really, that pass otherwise not objectively reasonable laws. And so when I say objectively reasonable, those two words sort of mean the same thing in the context of the law and the way that judges interpret them. In order to be objective, a reasonable person in similarly situated circumstances, that's the common phrase that's used, must also think it's a it's reasonable or objective. And so it seems circular. And no one, and like I told Mayor Mays at the meeting, no one really knows what an objectively reasonable law is until we see one that isn't. And a judge can come up with some factors that might be applied to understand whether or not the city's law, if one were to pass, and we don't have one right now, is also objectively reasonable. And it's based on something known as a totality of the circumstances test, which, again, affords a tremendous amount of difference to judges and but they're supposed to consider every factor. That's what totality of the circumstances means. It means, let's consider this and this and this, and then we'll put them all together, stir them in a pot, and see what comes out of it. And if whatever that mixture is, is objectively reasonable, then it is a valid law. And it must be objectively reasonable, and the key part of this, the whole takeaway from this bill is it must be objectively reasonable to all persons, but specifically to those experiencing homelessness. And so this sort of analysis is common in First Amendment claims, where you can't restrict free speech, for example, in certain forums unless it's objectively reasonable. And so I suspect a number of the cases that arise from this bill will will have a fundamental free speech element to them and that the same sort of analysis will apply. But what it really means for us is that if we if we pass a law before, well, after July first, twenty twenty-three, that isn't objectively reasonable as to the time and the manner and the place in which it's enforced or its impact, and whether that is direct or indirect, the city could pay some liability here. And so we're taking it pretty seriously, we're trying to understand the ways in which the city can comply with all these different statutes. So far, we're in perfect compliance. Again, we do not currently have a law that regulates the acts of sitting, lying down, sleeping, or keeping warm and dry in outdoor public spaces. And even if we did, I'm I'm confident we would come up with one that is objectively reasonable for all people. And so if anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them. The specifics, of course, are all listed in the agenda. And so other than me talking about it, I'm happy to hear your thoughts.
Okay, does does everyone, I just moved to Ms. Cannon to hear what she has to say, and then we can get the questions, does anybody have any problem with that approach? Okay, Ms. Cannon, you, would you like to proceed?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and members of council, I will share a screen here in a second, let me. Let me do that right now. Okay, can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, well, back at your January goal-setting session for the year, you identified shelter housing or transitional housing code as one of your goals. And so we're getting to that, I have a draft for your review tonight and discussion. This is not a hearing, of course, so it's a first draft, and I'll talk more about that as we go. So I want to just make a point that would be a follow-on to Jonathan Kara's presentation, and that would be that HB two thousand and six is very permissive. It's much more permissive than what we're proposing in this code. So for the for this year, until July one of twenty twenty-two, HB two thousand and six would supersede what we're proposing in this code. And so that's important for you to know. And so that's important for you to know that there is, the state law allows much more permissive citing of, and it requires us basically to approve this shelters, these emergency shelters in in the city, almost anywhere in the city, under certain conditions, but is far more permissive, as I mentioned, than what's proposed here. So with that in mind, I guess if you think about it, we're, we would be a step ahead. On July one, twenty twenty two, we would already have rules in place that would address shelter housing. So with that, I'll move on, and this is getting back to what Jonathan had said earlier. Our definitions, we tried to borrow as much as we could from Oregon revised statutes or the administrative rules so that our definitions match. And so what is what is homeless? It's defined in our, I won't read that to you, but it's defined in state law, and so that's mentioned there. We did create this definition. We have two types of shelters. One is a seasonal shelter, and that is a building or group of buildings that temporarily is used to provide homeless shelter housing for up to six months. And then the established shelters are a building or a group of buildings permanently used to provide homeless shelter or and incidental services. Okay, so where are those allowed? Here's a general zoning map, and we drill down into some details, but here's the whole city. We decided to use some landmarks that you might be able to easily recognize. So I think everyone knows where Spooky's is and Coastal Farm and so forth, so those are listed here. We've proposed that as of July one, twenty twenty two, that shelter housing be allowed in the CG zone and then also the CLI zone. CG is general commercial, and CLI is commercial light industrial, so it's a mixture. And so you can see these two areas separately, and then together on the next, you can see all of them. So you get an idea that it's kind of along the freeway, both on both sides of the freeway in different areas, and then both on the northern portion of the city, and then excluding the downtown, and then moving out toward the eastern side of the city. Both sides of the freeway, you have the area near Shiloh Inn and then the light industrial area, kind of on the eastern, I don't know, I'll just say on the eastern side of the city, but you have a good idea there where that is with Big Gems as your as your landmark. So what we've done here is we have a set of standards that are proposed for all shelters. And then you'll see in a few slides that we've identified some separate standards for those that are permanent shelters or established shelters, as we're calling them. Who can operate these types of shelters? And state law, we use HB two thousand six as our guide, and it states there that local government organizations, we want to make sure that state law dictates that the organization have at least two years' experience operating these types of shelters. And it's a local housing authority and religious corporation, public benefit corporation, as defined here. And in the event that they don't have two years' experience, there is the ability to be sponsored by or partnered with a nonprofit corporation that does have the experience. So particularly in smaller rural communities where you may have an entity that's less experienced, they could be partnered up with another nonprofit that does have the experience, as sort of a sponsoring entity. So some other standards that would apply to all shelters, that they provide sleeping and restroom facilities, that they comply with state building code standards. And as you may or may not know, we did go through a building code review with the pallet shelters as well. So that did happen prior to their installation. Setbacks would be the same as those in the underlying zone, that there would be fenced and landscape screening provided, fenced or landscape screening provided. And then also the operator provide a written operational plan that we can refer to that would include the scope of services, the bed capacity, hours of operation, and also some importantly, some twenty-four-hour contact information in the event that we need that in the future. Access, that access be provided from arterial or collector street. And that it gives me the ability to authorize a wider driveway if needed. And in some cases, that won't be necessary, but it allows that. And that, lastly, that that it, all the connections to the public street would need to meet the city's access management standards. Those standards run run the gamut of just making sure that we're providing safe entry and exit and exit to our city right of way. Surfacing, so what extra standards would we want to apply to established and permanent shelters? And as you may know, if we go back to the temporary emergency shelters, we do allow, out at the pallet shelter site, for instance, not all of that property is paved. So in the case of established and permanent shelters, we thought that the standard should be more like what we would what we would require of a of a permanent business. So in cases of a of a business or permanent use, we would require all areas that are going to be used for vehicular, pedestrian, rockways, that they be paved with asphalt, concrete, or similar material, and that we're adequately providing for the control of runoff. And that also importantly, that we're meeting ADA requirements for for access with those paved surfaces. For a parking requirement, we're requiring a minimum of one parking space per every ten beds and a maximum of one parking space per shelter unit. And then we would also ask that that we, that the parking area be designed to meet our parking lot design standards, which are identified in this section here. And that requires a little bit of landscaping and some other basic aesthetic and and so forth requirements. Landscaping, all areas not occupied by buildings, walkways, parking streets, and shelters shall be landscaped. And when you say, what does that mean? Not everything in our landscaping code, I was explaining this to someone else earlier, not everything has to be living material, so it can include ground cover materials that are not living, such as rock and so forth. Shelter maintenance and storage, we do anticipate that shelters would want to provide storage area for their guests and clients. But we are asking that they be kept neat, that there be a neat appearance, and that also everything that is stored be stored in an enclosed structure, building or a shed, and that there be no outside storage of materials, except for allowed vehicles, there be no outside storage of materials. And what are the next steps? Happy to answer any questions, of course, on the content of the code and any feedback you have. But as far as next steps, I did meet casually today, informally today, with Kenny LaPointe, who is our Director of the Community Action, Wasco County Community Action Council. And I spoke with him about the code. He did not, at first, at first review, he didn't have any negative comments. He felt like all of these standards were reasonable. One area that he anticipated there would be a need for on any facilities that he might want to develop would be that of parking, making sure that we do, that these shelters do provide some parking for guests so as to not kind of impact adjacent streets. So but when I, when I showed him the maximum and the minimum, he thought it was reasonable. So next stop, in addition to providing this draft to anyone you may want to share it with, we're also going to visit with the Mayor's Houseless Task Force on August seventeenth. I asked the mayor to put me on the agenda for that upcoming meeting. We're going to bring this forward to the Planning Commission September sixteenth as a discussion item. And then we're required in September, I believe it's September tenth, we're provide, required to provide a notice to, if we're required by state law to provide ballot measure fifty-six notices. If you remember, when we did the housing code amendments, we sent out notices to about sixty-five hundred households and properties. We may need to do that here, and if so, we would do that in September. Then we'll have a an adoption hearing once we've worked through any kinks out with our comment period. We would have an adoption hearing before the Planning Commission October twenty one and a city council hearing November twenty second. So happy to answer any questions or take your, or hear any reaction you have to this draft. I can also move, Mayor, I can move slides. I can either stop sharing or just move to a slide if there are questions.
Thank you very much. Okay. This is city council. There's a lot here to absorb. I'll open it up for discussion or council members, questions or comments. Counsel Runyon.
Okay. Just to be, just to be clear, the parking delineated here strictly for the temporary type seasonal and established shelters. But with regard to a navigational center, which would be a building in my eye, then you would have other parking rules that fall into play because of employees and that sort of thing, not just those that are being housed and their guests. Is that correct?
Correct, Counselor. I was just talking to Mr. LaPointe about that today. And in the case, as we do with all mixed uses, for instance, like a shopping center, and there might be a different there might be different uses in a shopping center. You would, for instance, in this case, we might call a navigation center or some of the service providers that would be available in a in an established shelter. We would call that maybe office space. So there would be a parking analysis that we would ask for from an applicant that would divide up the spaces. So if you had, I'm just going to throw out a number, two thousand square feet devoted to service providers, that may be designated an office space, and then the shelter would be considered separately from that.
Counsel Long Curtis.
Yes, so I was actually thinking about bicycles, and that was something that came up at the shelters that I had a number of people who had bicycles. Is with the way it's presented, is there a way to like allow them to have a bicycle rack where people can lock them up rather than just like strewn about the property?
I think that's a good catch, and thank you for the comment. We do require bike parking everywhere in the city, so I think that's a good comment. We'll just find a way to incorporate it in. And the question would be, I think we want to run by stakeholders, is would would guests want to store them inside a a storage structure, storage unit? Or would those, would it be okay for them to be stored outside in a rack? I don't know the answer, but we can look into it.
Yeah, so I would say they need to be accessible to the residents at all times, and they're currently, sometimes when you put things inside a building, that building is then locked for security, and it becomes an issue for residents to get access to their stuff. And a bicycle, you'd need to access more frequently. The other thing I wanted to say is that for the required notices, including the property owners, since we're looking at commercial areas, and this issue really is of interest, I would say to a lot of people who are more residential, probably, I'd just say the entire town. I I understand we don't need to send out letters to people that are farther away, but I do think we should notice it less, just like we would a regular ordinance where we're putting it on the radio, in the newspapers, just really making sure people know about this because we don't want blowback after we've approved something. We need to get it all out in the front.
That's good. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Cannon or for Mr. Kara?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple.
Go ahead, Counsel Richardson.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon, for your report tonight. I see that in the attachment describing how a shelter might be operated, there are four points that would be required in a written operational plan. I I guess I would assume that there would be a fifth point, but if not, then we should, in my opinion, make it really explicit, and that is that the operator have staffing on site twenty-four hours a day. Not just contact information. Want them to be there. And my other comment on this, I don't know how strongly I think this, but but I am wondering if it's worth thinking about, and that is the kind of operators, we have a proposal that a nonprofit corporation, presumably without experience in in the field, could operate a shelter if they partnered with one of these other entities that did. I'm wondering if we need to either spell out explicitly what partnering means, or even just strike that and say we will require two years' experience operating a shelter.
Counselor, let me, let me research that requirement a little bit more at the state level and find out if that's defined in the state law a little bit better. And if it, if it isn't, then that'll give us something to think about as we produce a new draft for your review.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, comment on that?
Is that okay, Counsel Richardson?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to say if we went with that definition, I believe that there is no one inside the Dawls who could currently do that because even St. Vincent de Paul only had a warming shelter. And so we don't have anyone here with two years' experience. But the person that I partnered with out of Portland does, and then there's also a state-level nonprofit, which basically already works with like MacAC. And so it, I just wanted to point that out, that, so I I think that's probably what she's looking at, but obviously she can look it up and explain it better.
Maybe we could, I I take your point. Thank you, Counselor Long Curtis. I wonder if it's worth spelling out what a partnership, you know, an acceptable level of partnering looks like to some degree.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I had one question for Mr. Kara, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your report tonight, Jonathan. With regard to HB three one one five coporation of the Martin versus Boise, correct me if I'm wrong, which is, you know, a good chance of being the case, but I thought the case had a clause or the idea that homeless folks who can't sit, lie on public property if there were no alternatives.
That's a great point. That's a great point. That is the same case. That idea that cities couldn't enforce or any locality, I'll keep saying city, but it really means city, county, state, anybody. The idea that a city can't enforce anti-vagrancy laws, as they're commonly known, which which speak on the issues of sitting and lying and keeping warm in public spaces. So, well, let me, let me just say it very clearly. So long as alternatives are available, a city may enforce anti-vagrancy laws. What is an alternative? That is a very difficult question for the courts to answer. Usually, what it means is a HUD, which is the Federal Housing Urban Development Department. It's a HUD-certified shelter. The Dawls has zero of those, and there are certain criteria that must be met according to this case in order to be certified by as a HUD shelter. And so to the extent that HB three one one five codifies that case, it does, it codifies the holding of it, but it doesn't actually touch on that issue of available shelter alternatives. I commented on that at the task force meeting as well. This law supersedes that. It says you can't do it even if you have shelters that are otherwise available to meet the needs of the jurisdiction's population. And so at the task force meeting, we went over, well, how many homeless people do we have in the, within city limits? How many homeless people do we have within Wasco County? And determining that number is of the utmost importance when you try to calculate, well, whether or not you have enough available shelter beds to meet all of those demands, one bed per homeless person. And it doesn't touch on the fact that if you offer an alternative to somebody experiencing homelessness, even for an evening, whether that is, whether that takes the shape of, here's a, here's a voucher to a hotel room for the evening, or why don't you come with me and we'll take you to the pallet shelters, which is a type of outreach that's conducted daily by Community Action Council and the City Police Department. If that person so refuses, then the anti-vagrancy laws, so-called, are enforceable, and they, they are enforced. The idea here is not to criminalize the act of being homeless or that experience, but it is, you know, it is somewhat permissible under Marvin Boise to enforce those laws when alternatives to that life are available and not taken, or rather refused, which is very often the case. And so, one common example that I've heard many times from our city police officers and from the executive director at Community Action, Kenny LaPointe, is that a number of homeless individuals, specifically in this region, the ones that are serviced by Maccak, don't abide by the rules that are in place at the shelter, you know? No drugs, no alcohol, things like that. And so they're evicted because they can't comply. And so to them, I mean, the alternative is available. And if, if the shelter has a bed available, that's, that's what I understand to be a reasonable alternative to being homeless for the night. But they just refuse for other reasons, or they're not willing to meet those standards. And so in those cases, I've instructed the City Police Department to treat, treat them like anybody else, right? If they're breaking laws, you, you may arrest them. If they're somewhere they shouldn't be, and we offer them an alternative to being there, and they refuse, then you may arrest them or issue them a citation. But you're right, it's a very good observation, Counsel Richardson. This bill does not speak on that issue of reasonable alternatives in the least.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Counsel Long-Curtis?
A question for our attorney, Mr. Kara. You said that Mid-Columbia Community Action Shelter, and the, they said, you said you can take people to the pallet shelter? You could just take them there if they're homeless? Because I understood it was different.
Well, according to Mr. LaPointe, there's a tremendous amount of outreach that occurs. And you, you know this better than anyone, Counsel Long-Curtis, about the outreach that Maccak has done and continues to do on a daily basis. Part of that outreach involves them coordinating with our city police officers. Whenever a established camping site is constructed on public property, the policy that I helped write with Captain Carrico has a requirement in there for the city police to get in touch with somebody at Community Action Council to join them when they go down for the noticing event, and to offer resources as they're available. The city manager has discussed on a number of occasions since, since last October, supporting the Community Action Council through a series of small grants. I believe that those grants were directed towards the acquisition of hotel vouchers in the amount of $10,000. And there are certain requirements necessary for, for the person experiencing homelessness to, to meet in order to qualify for those vouchers. And very often, the case is, is that they, they don't qualify because of their, their refusal to meet certain standards. And so no one is taken anywhere against their will, but certainly people are, are offered if there is shelter space available as an alternative. You know, I think a very common question that I've heard our city police officers ask a number of different homeless people is, have you tried going to the shelters? Have you seen if they had any open space? I understand that the shelters are, well, there's only 18 of them, two per bed or two per shelter, as you know. So 36 total. And so, you know, it appears that they're pretty full, but sometimes I think that there, there are vacancies on an off night or something like that. That's my understanding at least. If, if you know personally, have some personal knowledge on something that's contradictory to, to my understanding, please let me know, so I can consider that as we go forward.
Yeah, so I have only been down there once since I left. And I took someone there who was homeless so that they could talk to the shelter operations manager, the staff, whoever was there. And after I did that, I received an email from Mr. LaPointe stating that I was not allowed on the property without prior contact, contacting the shelter operations manager. And so I'm trying to figure out if a citizen knows that somebody is homeless and needs to help them, can they take them down there or not? Because if they can't, and that person has to go through some longer process to get approved, which is also what I was told, they have to go through a screening, then that's, doesn't really, it's not really the same. You know, it's not just a bed where, like I had a low-barrier shelter where people could come in, and I can make an instant decision. But that's not what's currently happening down at that other shelter. And so if we're going to be talking about laws and things, I, I want that to be considered.
Well, we're certainly talking about laws and things. I consider everything. I, I really welcome your comment. And I, I think, I think I take it with the spirit in which it was meant to be given, which is curiosity and to inform the public. As far as the city's role as the city's attorney, part of my job involves understanding this community's needs and ways that the law can help us meet them. I am not the attorney for Kenny LaPointe or Maccak. And so to the extent that they have some standards in place that may or may not prohibit certain members of, of the homeless community from attending or living there, that's between Maccak and their customers.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm no, in no way commenting on that or saying I think that's right or wrong. I'm just saying that for, for our purposes as the city, if, that we need to consider what is actually available, not just what we think is available, like how something actually works in practice. Because, you know, we might have unintended consequences if we make some assumptions on how things are working.
Yeah, that's completely correct. And Maccak is involved every step of the way, like I said, at, at those established campsites, for example. Because that's baked into our city policy. And so our city police officers must follow it. And they do, and they're happy to do it. And it's been working out, I think, okay. And, you know, we're all learning as we go. We're trying to stay consistent, not only with the state law, but with our, with our own standards, which I, I hope are a little bit higher. And so we're figuring it out as we go. And I think all indications suggest that we're on the right path. As far as that limited question of, you know, are these alternatives freely available? One option is, as, as you indicated, the pallet shelters, but that may not be such a great option for the reasons that we were talking about. Another one that we haven't talked about, but I, I spoke about briefly, was the shelters, not the shelters, I'm sorry, the voucher program that the city funded partially. And you're right, there are some certain screenings there. Because the last thing anybody wants is for someone to have, you know, a free ticket to a hotel room. And they go, which, which has been happening. The hotel, hotels are no longer honoring those vouchers because of some significant damage to their real property into the room. And so these screening methods are objective in the sense that they apply equally to everyone. But of course, there's a modicum of discretion, I suspect, that resides in the Community Action Council and the way that they spend that money and, and who, who gets these vouchers. In either case, the idea that having reasonable alternatives is something the city has in mind, and only for, for the sole reason of enforcing an anti-vagrancy law, is not at all what's happening, not even close. And so we want to have reasonable alternatives to help people in any situation, to avoid the acute traumas associated with homelessness. And so it's, it's been something that we're trying to figure out. What are alternatives? What are available alternatives? And it's a discussion that I welcome. I could use the help. I think we all could, coming up with some creative ideas here to, to improve the health, safety, and welfare of our community.
Okay, great.
Okay, other questions? Or comments? I have one, a couple from Ms. Cannon. You talk about stakeholder review and comment during September. What other stakeholders did you have in mind besides Mid-Columbia Community Action?
Mayor and counsel, I would welcome your advice on that. So I, I'll take any ideas you have. Initially, it was Mr. LaPointe and, and Mr. Mattson, thought I'd reach out to him and get his feedback, or maybe someone on his staff. And then maybe a few others, but I really, any ideas that you have, I would welcome them.
Okay, I have a few. I'll get with you later on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, the other question, I'm a little confused about House Bill 2006. I thought you had indicated, and correct me if I'm wrong, that according to 2006, homeless shelters would be allowed almost anywhere. With the key word there being "almost," my question would be, if I understood what you said, where would not they, where wouldn't they be allowed under that?
Can I ask Jonathan to help me answer that one, because he, he covers that in his report?
So it's important because there are so many definitions. And it's important to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. And so 2006 has emergency shelters as a defined term, low-barrier emergency shelters as a defined term, and navigational centers as a defined term. And so I, I suspect what you're asking about specifically, Mayor Mayes, is what's defined as an emergency shelter? And so these are buildings or clusters of buildings providing shelter on a temporary basis. And so what's the most analogous one would be the pallet shelters, for example. And so because of that temporary nature, there is no criteria for zoning under HB 2006, as I read it. It appears that if an applicant otherwise meets the criteria for establishing an, an emergency shelter as those criteria are laid out in the bill, it must be approved anywhere in the city. The caveat being, because it's an emergency shelter on a temporary basis, it's not going to be a land use decision implicating our zoning. It sort of supersedes zoning for this really narrow circumstance. Now elsewhere, you know, in other bills, there are certain requirements. One bill that I didn't include here, and Alice and I met with Kenny LaPointe on this one as well, was SB 8. And SB 8 has certain restrictions on certain types of housings and shelters that specifically lay out which districts may or may not have within a zoning district map, may have these types of special shelters that are authorized under SB 8. But those are specifically permanent shelters. And so because of the permanency associated with it, we have to think about zoning. But because these are temporary, they appear to be allowed anywhere throughout the city.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a follow-up question to that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Jonathan, are we within our authority to zone all three types of shelters? Even if the state law allow, essentially doesn't address it?
The state law takes the question that you just asked and throws it out the window and says, you don't have to worry about that city of the Dalles, because we're going to worry about it for you, and we're going to say, we know better. For these temporary bases, you must cite those shelters that are addressed in 2006 everywhere throughout your city on the basis that they're temporary, and so that there's no zoning implicated. So if we were to do those types of shelters, or to authorize those types of shelters in any zone, that, that is actually what, what Alice just talked about, is, is the authorization of the city through its code to update its zoning to allow these types of shelters, yeah.
Okay, any other que, Counsel Long-Curtis?
Is there a time limit on that particular rule? I thought it was supposed to be a limited duration because of COVID? Or is this like forever?
Well, one of the provisions of this bill 2006 is that imagine, imagine somebody submits an application today, or let's say August 1st, 2021. And the city, and it otherwise meets the requirements that are set out in the bill. The city has no discretion, it must approve it, and the development of that emergency shelter will occur. But if it doesn't occur, and that shelter is not operational by August 1st, 2023, so two years from the date of the application was approved, the approval is void. And so any, any, any applicant that otherwise meets the criteria, like I said in my presentation, they got to put the pedal to the metal, and they have to get that thing built quick. Otherwise, the approval gets revoked, and they're not allowed to have that shelter there under that mechanism. But Alice mentioned that the whole approval requirement process, and it's the very last bullet point in that subheading, it's repealed on July 1st, 2022 for any applications not completed or submitted before the date of the repeal. And so as I understand it, those shelters may operate there on a temporary basis, because that's what, that's the definition of an emergency shelter, it shall be temporary. Now, what does temporary mean? Well, we know it means non-permanent, but other than that, it's a little ambiguous. And so I, I'm not the state attorney general, I didn't write this one. I would have maybe defined it a little bit different. And you, you may notice, actually, in Alice's Code amendments, that we did define temporary or seasonal as being limited to six months. And so were I the state's attorney, I would have written an actual timeline. But under this bill, the definition is just temporary. So I, I don't think any court would have a problem with putting a clock on it for six months if push came to shove, but it's unanswered, and so.
Jonathan, Counselor Long-Curtis, the League of Oregon Cities, when we had a session on this, they were saying that it was ambiguous also. They were also saying that if, if the shelter is established within the timeframe that Jonathan stated, if it gets, if, if it gets approved prior to July 1, 2022, and it's established and operational within two years, it can remain, they basically said it can remain in perpetuity until it's no longer in operation. So whatever that means, but if it's temporary, then they can stay in operation. But if it's one that, if temporary means permanent, we don't know if it does or not, then it can stay longer. So, yeah, ambiguous.
I'm, I'm sorry that I wasn't clear, because that wasn't my question. And I certainly don't have any problem with the six-month time limit, because it would have been about five for the winter shelter, if we were just playing on weather. But my question, which I think Mr. Kara did actually answer, and I just want to point out to other people, is that after that date in 2022, if somebody applies, we do not have to allow them to put it anywhere. That's when we can have our rules in place. I just wanted to be clear that this is not forever, that we have to allow this. That's all.
That's exactly right.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, staff, very much. So from here, it looks like it's going to be going to stakeholders for review and the planning commission in September. We're going to be sending notices to state and property owners. Will the, will the notices to property owners be as, as comprehensive as the last time when we sent the housing updates out, Ms. Cannon?
No, Mayor, no. It would typically, in accordance with Validation 56 state law requirements, it would, we would send those only to property owners whose property value may be affected. And so we have to define what that means. But in the case, it would only be CG and CLI property owners that would get that notice by law.
Or a certain number of feet from within those properties?
No, if, we're, what we're doing is changing our code. And so we would, we would only send the code amendments to the affected property owners, as is determined by state law. And then, as was stated earlier, we would follow our legislative noticing requirements that ISADA does for all new ordinances. But this is not a quasi-nutritional type hearing, so it would only, it would be a legislative hearing. Therefore, it's citywide, we would not have to, within so many feet, we wouldn't provide notice. And that's important to note, in our code, we're not requiring that it go through a conditional use hearing. This would be a by right, allowed use in, under the conditions we outlined in the CG and CLI zones.
Thank you. So the next time we expect to hear something on this will be in November?
Yes, unless, unless there's a reason to come back sooner, and we're happy to do that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, sounds like the staff has done a lot of good work on this. We appreciate it very much. Okay, sounds like the staff has done a lot of good work on this. We appreciate it very much. Okay, before we adjourn, we address the minutes from July 12th, Counsel Long-Curtis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on page 19 of the packet, about halfway down the page where I'm giving my council report, I wanted to either correct there or correct down below your quote to make it clear that when I was saying that I thought the community should have an opportunity to weigh in, I wasn't just talking about the aquifer or the water issue. I was specifically saying about all their concerns before the negotiations were complete and you brought it back to council for approval. So I would, suggested language would be, on that bullet point, spoke with constituents. Second sentence, I suggest she asks that the community have an opportunity to weigh in on the entire potential agreement with Google before the public meeting to approve the Google agreement.
Okay.
And then if we make that change, that second line where it says, I'd like an opportunity to talk about all their, about water rights, we could just strike that because it would all be, all the information would be included in my report. And then I just think it's important because you're talking about, there's no August meetings, and you're talking about approving the Google agreement in September. And so I just want the public to know that that is what I meant.
Okay.
I think, may I say something just? This is the old city clerk in me coming out. When you want to change the minutes to what you meant, it would be improper to change these minutes. If they reflect what you said, then in the set of minutes for tonight's meeting, there would be a sentence in there where the city clerk would clarify your intent. But to change what actually was said would be improper.
I don't think it is changing what I said. I mean, I could go back and listen to it, but I was, I feel like I was really clear that I wasn't just talking about water rights. I brought that up and then I moved on to the next section. So...
Well, I thought, in listening, I thought you were referring to the water agreement myself. That's just me.
What we could do before we have these approved is ask the city clerk to go back and review the audio recording and then we can put these back on the next agenda for approval if they need to be changed, if that's acceptable to everyone.
Acceptable by me.
That's fine.
Was this your only issue, Ms. Counselor Long-Curtis?
Yes, that was the only thing in the minutes I wanted to change.
Okay, so we'll hear back from the staff regarding this issue at the next council meeting. Thank you. Anything else to come before the city council? Okay, this meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.